Today is the 4th of September and the meeting is called to order at 6:00 PM. Will Commissioner Hodges please lead us in as quickly as we can and pledge allegiance?
Okay. Our Heavenly Father, we praise you for giving us this opportunity to meet together this evening to discuss and decide matters of common interest and concern. We acknowledge that self-government is a privilege that not all people in this world enjoy. Help us to use this power and the privileges wisely and in a way that will preserve and enhance this gift for generations that follow. This we pray.
Please stand for the Pledge of the Flag.
Pledge of the Flag to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Black?
Present.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Oakley?
Here.
Commissioner Douthat?
Present.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. And as discussed before, I recommend that we remove Item 11A and put it on the next workshop agenda.
Okay, and Madam Mayor, I would also like to remove from the agenda, under consent agenda, Number B. That was the additional $35,000 to CARS, Rigs, and Ingram for marine audit and place that on a workshop.
Okay. I would like to say that we should leave the additional $35,000 to the CARS, Rigs, and Ingram in the attempt to get it speedily moving along, to continue it moving along. So, I don't know, do we need to take a...
Madam Mayor, members of the Board, if the item is not approved this evening, I would effectively have to stop the auditors from proceeding with the audit until authorization is provided by the Board of Commissioners. So, there is some actions that would have to take in the event that the Board does not approve this or postpones a decision.
If you want to take it off to consensus, fine, but move it to new business, but I don't see taking it off this agenda.
I just feel that $50,000, this needs to be discussed instead of voted on. That's a lot of money. So, I feel like it should be removed and put into a workshop for discussion.
Well, first of all, I believe that we should continue with deciding what to do about Item 11A, and then we can discuss that one. So, do we have consensus to remove that and put it on the next workshop?
11A?
11A?
Yes. That's okay.
Then we can now get on with the consent agenda and Item B. I concur that a workshop would not be appropriate, but we could put it on under new business or without the old business.
Especially because the City Manager has deadlines he needs to meet and whatever is, needs to happen, so.
Yeah, doesn't make sense to stop and start.
Right.
I did review the initial letter that we did, or that we did have with the group, with the CARS and their names. And it did, to me, it indicated that that was going to be a beginning, you know, that would start the process. I certainly did never thought that that would, you know, I mean, when you need to, you need to discuss things, you need to work on it, you've got the workload. So, no, I'm in agreement with allowing it to pertain on this agenda.
But still, it has not been discussed, and I think it needs to be discussed. Like I said, $50,000 is a lot of money to spend.
It is. You're exactly right, Commissioner, you are, but I think that we did discuss it prior to, prior to even, you know, considering it. I think that it was...
I don't remember the discussion.
It was made...
Well, Commissioner Hodges, we can, we can move it to, whether you call it old or new business.
New business.
To new business, okay.
Well, it would be old, because we already did part of it.
Old business.
Correct. Okay. Old business.
Is it old or new business?
I wouldn't recommend to place it under old business, Madam Mayor.
Regardless, if we, we'll move it to old business and then we can discuss it then. Would that be all right with Commissioner Hodges?
No, really. I just feel like we just need to really sit down and really talk about this, because, like I said, that's $50,000 we're looking at. And I'm not pleased with that at all. Not pleased.
All right, before we go forward, do we have a consensus to move it to this...
Old business.
Old business.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
No.
Say yes.
Yes. Madam Mayor, if I may, Madam Clerk, would they, would the Board need to take official legislative action to amend the agenda as published to incorporate the changes as articulated by the mayor? Or can they do it by a consensus?
They can approve the, they can approve the agenda excluding the two items and direct, at the same time where they will be placed.
Okay. So, do we need a motion to do that? So, we do that by consent. On consent.
You would, you would do it...
Same way.
Or do you want a motion?
I, I think it would be smoother to have a motion to amend the agenda as communicated by the Board of Commissioners. And you can easily say as stated by the manager, and that would effectively accomplish what the Board's desires are.
I think I got it. Make a motion to approve this agenda with the changes of moving 11A, City Manager, or City Manager Beach Pat Johnson's Day of Good Deeds to the September 25th workshop. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And that we take 6B, additional $35,000 to CARS, Rigs, and Ingram to complete the audit and move that to old business.
I will second that.
End discussion? All right, we have a first and a second. Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
No.
Mayor Black?
Yes. Next on the agenda, under unfinished business, we have ordinance 2018-06, updating the parking code, second reading and public hearing.
Madam Mayor, members of the Board, there has been no modifications since first reading, and staff recommends approval on second and final reading, updating the parking code. Currently, the code of ordinance does not allow or include language authorizing the enforcement of posted parking areas in public rights of way. There is a public safety concern associated with this particular action if it is not executed, so staff is recommending the approval of ordinance 2018-06. We've discussed this with the Board at length, and at this point, staff is prepared to address any questions the Board may have, but we are recommending approval on second and final reading.
Before we do that, I think we need to go back and do public comment, the things we skipped over.
Yes, yes, I see that. I apologize.
It was kind of because we got moved down...
We got wrapped up in the moving things.
Okay.
Okay, the meeting is now open for public comment. The call comes for three minutes, and please limit your time, I mean, please state your name and address, and please remember to be civil and kind. Yes, sir.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive. Going to say it every time, and at the beginning of the meeting, is, I would really appreciate if you would start these meetings at 7 o'clock, more of the people other than people that are retired, don't have jobs, don't have kids, can show up. If you start at 7, you might get more attendance, and you talked about open government transparency. When you have meetings and people aren't showing up, that's not very transparent. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
John Hendricks, 569 Normandy Road, Madeira Beach. And I am a member of the Budget Committee. This is another $35,000 that wasn't even brought into consideration for the budget that was just done. That's what we're here for tonight, and I'd like to know what this is about, the marina?
This is on, you can speak about that when we get to that topic, but...
Well...
This is for anything that's not on the agenda.
Well, I'm telling you, this is nothing more than a witch hunt from this commission. That's all it is.
Would anyone else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. And next, actually, we skipped over presentations, and I apologize to you, quarterly law enforcement update.
Madam Mayor, members of the Board, before Deputy Roxby provides some insight with respect to the quarterly updates, this was basically a conversation that we've had at previous Board meetings, that it was the Board's desire to get quarterly updates from law enforcement concerning some of the activities that are occurring in our community. So, this is the first presentation of that. If there is anything outside of the presentation, certainly Deputy Roxby or myself will be able to address those. There are certain items as part of the presentation she will not be able to disclose because some of them may be ongoing investigations that's being conducted with the Sheriff's Office. So, at this particular time, I will introduce Deputy Roxby.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Deputy Shannon Roxby with the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, and I'm one of your community policing deputies for the city. Tonight, I'm going to be giving a quarterly report. It's going to include information from January to July, since this is the first one, and all of the information was put together by our Strategic Planning Bureau and is sent out monthly. So, to start, in July, there was a total of 1,238 events in the city of Madeira that resulted in 1,880 units responding, which means there was 1,880 deputies that went to these calls. There's a total of 115 of the major crimes that were reported to the Sheriff's Office from January through July, as you can see listed. There's a total of 113 accidents that were reported in Madeira Beach from January to July. There is a total of over 1,600 citations and warnings that were issued. For code enforcement, starting in January to August, there was 214 code enforcement cases that were opened. 204 of these came into compliance, and we still have 10 open at this time. We took six different code enforcement cases to the magistrate, and some of them remain open with daily fines at this time. We also had 10 code enforcement cases that were processed by citation. This basically means anybody that was out of town, that doesn't reside in Madeira Beach, or some could be like transients that are sleeping on the beach, those kind of code enforcement issues are solved by citations instead of taking them to the magistrate. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have them today.
Deputy Roxby?
Yes, ma'am.
On the one page here where you talked about the total of 113 motor vehicle crashes in the city, do you have a rough idea as to where in the city? It was like on 150th or Johns Pass, or, I know it's kind of going back quite a bit, and I'm probably asking a stupid question, but I'm just curious, is there a pattern somewhere?
I don't have that information, but I can certainly get back to you with that.
Okay, thank you. I believe you have...
There is, there is information, Shannon.
They give the top 10, but specifically total, I don't.
Oh, okay, because it shows the addresses and stuff where the crash and citation analysis is.
Didn't go far enough back.
Don't have hitched on the board.
Okay, I see that.
Yes, you do.
Sorry about that, Shannon.
I would like to comment on something, and I had mentioned this to Shannon prior to the, to the meeting. When I thought that we were going to do a sheriff's report, like some of the other reports, I had, I had looked at the report that was done by the Sheriff's Office that I printed off the computer on August the 7th, and I think that was what I showed you, like it was, instead of a whole bunch of different pages, okay, and maybe, you know, the commission has their own thoughts on that, I really thought of, I wanted, I had hoped to see events, okay, just events. It didn't matter if it was, what's the examples? Let's see, events. Deputy activity, okay? It really didn't matter to me, I reckon, if it was an alarm or noise violation or transporting a prisoner or whatever. I was really just, not concerned, but I was interested in the total number of events, okay, and how many officers responded yearly and by month, and then year-to-date, instead of just a lot of different pieces of paper. I was looking for a comparison, so, you know, with a lot, with not a lot of graph work, because I don't need, I don't think that's our intent. I think our intent is really to see, I mean, my intent in asking it, was really just to see where the greatest activity lies and what the total incidents were, okay? What, yeah, what the total events were. For instance, and I think I had showed you on this sheet, what I was thinking about, Commissioners, okay, was, for instance, if you look at the deputy activity sheet, okay, just look at that, and instead of that, for every single month, based on every single category, to just have January through July events and then units responding, okay, just a simple, you know, little graph page. The same thing with code enforcement, which I think is great that you, thank you very much for that information on code enforcement, because we never had that before, and that wasn't presented on here. The other thing I was interested in, that, I don't know if it's reasonable to get this from the Sheriff's Department, or if you have the capacity for getting it, but since I thought that July 2018 was a really high spike of a month, really high spike, when you look at the months since January, I was curious if we could somehow separate the, do you have any way of knowing if these incidents were, if these incidents were reported by residents or by visitors? That's what I was curious about. I was just thinking in the month of July, if you have an inordinate amount of youth visiting the city, okay, or a special segment of society or whatever, maybe that's the reason for the high amount in July.
I can talk to our crime analyst and get that information for you.
Okay. And I'm not, I mean, if it's too intricate or whatever, if they have to, you know, develop something, then maybe it's not really important, but I'd be curious if any of the other municipalities that y'all do provide law enforcement ask for those certain kind of questions.
I can find out.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the Board, since this is the first, we definitely want to get the opinion and perspective of the Board as to some of the items that you would like to see in order to be able to drill down specifically on the reports, and then when we do launch our new website, this is information that will be easily accessible to the public as well. So, if there's any suggestions or comments or perspectives, I'm sure the crime analysts at the Sheriff's Department can drill down specifically down to the granular level or keep it 30,000 foot where we attempted to do with this analysis, but if there's any specific things that you're looking for, certainly Deputy Roxby or myself can make sure that we incorporate that in the next update to the Board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are at item 7, ordinance 2018-06, Updating the Parking Code, Second Reading and Public Hearing.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Board, staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2018-06, Updating the Parking Code. As previously stated, the code of ordinance does not currently include language authorizing the enforcement of posted parking areas and public rights away. There is a public safety concern associated with this, and staff is recommending that we proceed forward with the adoption on second and final reading of this particular ordinance. There has been copious amounts of conversations that have occurred associated with this item, and law enforcement can provide some additional insight on some of the challenges that we experience with the existing code. This provides for the opportunity for us to ensure that we can preserve safe passageway through our community and address any illegal parking issues. And at this time, staff recommends approval of ordinance 2018-06 on second and final reading.
I'll make the motion to go ahead and pass ordinance 2018-06, Updating the Parking Code on the second reading and public hearing.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Board, if we can have the city clerk read the ordinance title into the record.
Ordinance 2018-06, An Ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, Providing for Amendment of Part II, Code of Ordinances, Chapter 66, Traffic and Vehicles, Article III, Stopping, Standing, Parking III, Division I, Generally Adding a Section for Prohibited On-Street Parking, Providing for Definitions, Providing Signage Requirements, and Providing for Penalty and Enforcement, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Severability, Providing for an Immediate Effective Date.
I'll second.
The floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is now closed. I, we, we all got an email, I believe, from a gentleman in Madeira Beach who wanted to make some changes to this. Is that a focus now? I mean, just a couple of words?
On second and final reading, it would, the attorney would have to look at what the proposed amendments are. If it's substantive changes, you would have to go through the process to re-advertise the ordinance and go through it once again. And I believe staff is aware of the modifications. If there's grammatical or syntax changes or minor tweaks, we can certainly make those. But if it's anything that modifies the intent of the ordinance, then we would have to go through the, the re-advertising process.
I don't believe there are substantive changes, just like you said, so we can just do that after the fact?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any more discussion from the board on this item?
I believe Linda went through this very thoroughly when she first brought it up.
Okay.
If we can, if the city clerk has a copy of what the proposed changes are, I don't have that on me. I will have, I would recommend that at this particular moment to allow for the attorney to take a look at what the proposed changes are before we effectively take action on this. So if we wanted to move on to another item and then allow for us to come back to this item, so he can look at this and make sure everything is copesthetic and we can effectively make the modifications as articulated here. One of the concerns I have about making any modifications and tweaks associated with this particular ordinance at this moment is that the Planning and Zoning Director is not here to be able to address some of the concerns that were articulated in the actual email. So I will pass this on to the attorney, and if it's the board's pleasure, we can revisit this at a later time in the agenda after he has an opportunity to take a look at what the changes are.
I really don't want to, you know, postpone this. I think there are very, very minor changes in it. I don't think we need to go, we can approve it as is.
Okay.
I thought if it was simple, it'd be okay, but it's not that simple. It's fine.
So you're, you, just to be clear, you want to approve the ordinance as it's written now advertised without the amendments?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
Yes. Any more discussion?
Also, they might not have been actually amendments. They might have been comments to the, you know, to the suggested, to all of the wording.
It was just general suggestions of slight word changes, not, not anything major, but. Any more discussion from the board? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Oh, we did, yes, yes.
Weinstein?
Yes, we did.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next item is ordinance 2018-08, Reaffirming Existing Boundaries of Election Districts, Second Reading and Public Hearing.
Ordinance 2018-08, An Ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, Reaffirming Existing Boundaries of Said Election Districts Within the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, Contains a Balance of Electors That Does Not Exceed a 15% Difference in Any District By Providing for Reading-by-Title Only, By Providing for Repel of Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Herewith to the Extent of Such Conflict, and By Providing for an Effective Date. The Board of Commissioners approved this ordinance on first reading on August the 14th, and I went through everything, and from 2007 to date, there has not been any changes, significant changes in any of the districts all the way to date.
Floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is now closed. Any more discussion from the board?
No, I'm comfortable that we're doing this, too. It has been 11 years since the last time that the election districts were canvassed, so I think it's a, a good thing, and it certainly shows us what our city clerk has, has researched about the negligible changes in the number of voters in each district. So yes, I think it's good. So I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
Is that okay? I move that ordinance 2018-08, Reaffirming the Existing Boundaries of Election Districts, be approved on the second, second reading and public hearing.
Second. Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Open it up, open it up to public hearing.
Oh, sorry, thought we did that. It's now open for public hearing, I mean, public comment. It's now closed for public comment. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Mayor Black?
Yes.
Next item is the corrected agreement with Johns Pass Village Association, Inc., for the Johns.
unfinished business. Oh, it's all.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, excuse me.
Okay. I'll read this again. Corrected agreement with the Johns Pass Village Association, Inc., for the Johns Pass Seafood Fest event. Director Hatch?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. My apologies for bringing this forward again, some inconsistent language on the contract provided, it basically didn't match up. But now we have consistent language of the Johns Pass Village Association throughout the contract, as well as the documents provided by Sonny. Additionally, we had some comments today upon approval, if this is approved, we were going to, on item, if you look at the, the contract page, on item two, we were going to add the amount of the waived parking of $31,883. At the bottom, it says 60 days after the conclusion of the event, failure to comply will result in all fees waived to the sum of $31,883 submitted to the city within 45 days. As well as in item number five, the city waives any fees to the sum of $31,883 for the use of city's parking lots. So upon approval, we're, we would look to add that just prior to signing of the contract, just to make sure that the, the set number of waiver and payment is clear.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, also, we would change the language that require the performance to be delivered to the Finance Director for the City of Madeira Beach as well. So what staff is articulating is that we would like to make those modifications to the agreement if it is the desires of the board, and then have the contract executed probably most likely tomorrow, once we can make all those changes. And then the mayor, if authorized, will, will sign the agreement, and the other party representing the Johns Pass Village Association will sign afterwards.
I had a couple of questions over the sheriff's agreement, because I was reading the, what, the Event After Actions Report, and this must be the one he wrote from last year. And in here, it states that a traffic plan should be created, and I did not see a traffic plan in all this, number one. And an event planning guide must be completed with the assistance of the CPO or Sheriff's Office designated. And I didn't see that either.
Actually, I think that's from 2014, if I understand that.
Yes, the after-action report that I provided is, that actually has the recommendation for utilization of the Johns Pass Park, for the parking. That's the highlighted section. Other, other changes have been, I haven't seen the 15, 16, or 17 report. I can't confidently say whether or not they were done.
Can we request those? Because I'd like to see those. They're very informative.
Yeah, it is very informative, and I'm actually glad I found that one. Yeah, I'll ask, I'll get with our deputies and, and see if that's something that they've done. Typically, that was provided to the event, and we just happened to have a CPO at the time that provided it to us, so.
But the other, the other thing is, is this Pinellas County Sheriff's Office's secondary employment, it, it doesn't say how many officers, it doesn't say how much they're charging, doesn't say anything regarding the request for additional law enforcement. It just seems like a very incomplete contract to me.
Well, this is, this is still, the application itself is still in the progress. I mean, the approval of parking is one thing. We still have road closures to work with, we haven't issued the alcohol permit. There's a lot of stuff that are contingent on this before we move forward into those other things. These are just all the documents that she had provided up to the time. I, I wanted to provide pretty much as much information as we could at the time to see if there were any concerns, and this is one that we'll take note of. But that's, it is there.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, the agreement with the Sheriff's Department is the agreement between Johns Pass Village Association and the, the event organizers and the Sheriff's Department. The city is not a party to that particular agreement, so once that information becomes available, then we can certainly provide that information. But it is the responsibility of the event organizers to execute all the documents to be able to utilize the Sheriff's Department and pay for the services associated with that. So that's not something that's, that we as a city effectively can require to be a binding part of our agreement as it's with another government entity, but we can certainly provide that to you once the application and the packet is complete.
I totally understand that, but my, I guess I'm questioning the fact that it says here in the attachments, it says Sheriff's Department contract. There's not really a contract there yet. From, from what you're saying, there's not really a contract there.
At this, yeah, at this particular moment, they haven't executed a contract, because we haven't executed our contract yet. So once our contract is executed, I think that is the mechanism that says, okay, effectively the city of Madeira Beach is going to waive the fees and enter into an agreement, and that's something that they now can provide and say, okay, to proceed forward. But I can assure you that there's been conversations with law enforcement, because I was partying to one of the conversations, and there's been additional dialogue that's occurred. So I think it's basically at the point where it's inking the agreement between the parties and negotiating the, the deputies and what some of the security checkpoints and protocols will be. But once that is completed, we certainly will furnish that to the board.
I have a couple of questions. Jay, on the certificate of liability insurance, from a court, on both of those, have you confirmed, or would you confirm, I reckon, that naming, it shows the certificate holder is Johns Pass Village, which really doesn't mean anything to me, okay? But I guess my real question is, is, well, the reinsurer does say Johns Pass Village Association. So would you just be certain from a court or from the agent that naming the certificate holder of the city of Madeira Beach, okay, does absolve us of any, any and all liability, okay? Because I know all these contracts are written differently, all of the endorsements are written differently. So would you please just reconfirm that?
Yeah, absolutely. We actually started that conversation a couple of weeks ago with our, the city's insurance agent, because there is a lot of, you know.
Ambiguity.
Exactly, exactly. So, you know, as a good exercise, I can just send her two copies of this and say, hey, is this, this is what we're looking for. I mean, she explained it to me in, in her wording in an email, but I will, you know, I'll just scan these over to her and say, hey, you know, what does this do for us? Is this what we're looking for? Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much, Jay. And then the other thing is, under the schedule of payments, which there's no real pages, but the schedule of payments, the $13,000, first of all, you did allude to this, I think, in the beginning, when you said Sonny would like fees waived for parking revenue estimated at the $31,882.
Yes.
$882.43, so that's what we're waiving. But under the event fees, okay, the $13,126.26, when are, when's that payable? Since it's already an estimate, is that normally paid in advance and then refunded back to them for any unused things?
Well, one of the biggest portions of that is the $4,000 deposit. This number last year was closer to the $9,000, $10,000 range. The deposit was lower last year, it's, we've actually brought it up. And then her end-of-the-year total was closer to $4,500. It was less than $5,000 once it was all said and done and reconciled. So we will receive the deposit upfront, EMT and fire, I believe, is paid before. Sanitation, sanitation staff, public works, trash, tipping fees, that is all the estimate portion, and then the road closure fee, additional hard costs. So looking at, real quick math, $7,900.
Upfront.
Upfront is the, would be the, you know, $4,000 of which being the security deposit.
Okay, so we're gonna, so you get the deposit, right?
Yes.
Upfront, and I'm sorry, I, you were going so fast.
Sorry, the, the security deposit, the EMT, fire.
Okay.
Actually, I believe, that's an estimate as well, so I apologize. Let me take that back. So that's an estimate.
Okay, so that won't be, okay.
The road closure fee of $1,000.
Okay.
So that's, we should receive $5,000 upfront for that event.
What was the $7,900 upfront?
That was, that was miscalculation on my part. I put the EMT and fire in there. That's, that's an estimate as well. And that number will get more fine-tuned, the more we have these, these logistic meetings for this event, we'll know what they need and, and what hours they're needed, so.
Okay. I did have one other thing. I don't know if you brought it up or not, but it's with regards to the, I, I didn't see a traffic plan in here. Did you men, I don't know, maybe somebody mentioned that already, but it did state that we were supposed to see a traffic plan?
Yeah, the traffic plan will be part of this. Really, the only thing that they do for this event is the intersection closest to the Jerky Outlet, I forget, Johns Pass Park, that, and it's not really a four-way, but they close that turn lane, there's no left turn. So if you come over the bridge, you will not be able to take a left turn into, into Johns Pass Park. And if you're trying to go towards Treasure Island, you won't be able to take a left-hand turn into Johns Pass. That, that's the plan that she proposed, and that's another signature we're waiting on. But that, that would be a DOT approved. They really just closed that section because all those left turns and all the traffic we get, it just ends up backing up and, and gumming up the whole event. So that's really the only closure they have.
And that's a permit that's required through FDO. FDO effectively has to approve that of the city.
Okay. And you know, when we were talking about the la, I forget, was it the last meeting, when we were talking about the requirement versus recommendation from the Sheriff's Department to use the South Beach lot? Okay, it does appear that it wasn't a requirement. I might be certainly wrong on that, you know, but when I'm looking at what the Sheriff's Department had presented to us, you know, what I'm looking at right now, it appears that it was a recommendation. It didn't say that we really had to close off or allow for, for the use of the Uber and Lyft and stuff like that, because I had a problem with that. But do you, do you know if it really was a recommendation or a requirement by the Sheriff's Department? Or do you?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I think the, the language as far as recommendation or requirement when you're dealing with law enforcement effectively accomplishes the same thing, because if they're going to be involved in the event, they want to make sure that they eliminate as many potential vehicular pedestrian conflicts and to allow for eliminate as many potential vehicular pedestrian conflicts and to allow for safe drop-off. And that is the safest way to accomplish that. And the conversation that we had with law enforcement at a meeting where we got together to talk about the flow of the event, it was communicated from the Sheriff's Department as well as the event organizers that that is the site that works best for what they're attempting to accomplish. I even think that they're looking to stage some of their mobile command area, and there's going to be a free speech zone there and some other things. So, they may not have told us that effectively we have to utilize, but they strongly encouraged us that that area works for what we're trying to effectively accomplish or what the event organizers are trying to accomplish with the event. So, if we decided to do something different, I don't know what the alternative would be, and it probably would be more problematic than allowing for the use of that area.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments, but I just, I guess I just have to reiterate that I'm not real pleased with the way any of this went this year, I guess. We did receive two pieces of paper, which really don't mean anything to me. It was a list of the charities, okay? There was absolutely nothing that said, it was just a list of names. There was nothing, there was no date on it, there was no, I'm not looking for amounts because, you know, that's negligible, but I just would have preferred, I reckon, for it to be more, well, to really know that those, you know, were the charities that were, for what period of time. It doesn't say if that was last year's or five years ago, or, you know, anything like that. And so I was a little bit concerned about that. And as a member of the community and working with the seafood festivals for so many years, I will have to say that we've always had a lot of problem in trying to get the information as a citizen, okay, not sitting up here. Because on this profit and loss statement, it doesn't even show a period of time or anything. So, to me, it wasn't, it really wasn't valid. It doesn't show us what year, and it doesn't, it doesn't tell us, for instance, it says vendor expense, $220,000. Well, it doesn't really say what that is. Not that, not that I think that we have to know what that is, okay, but I think that when something is presented like that, we should have more of a, more content, more specific content.
Okay. It is my understanding that that list is the charities that are participating this upcoming year. And then as far as the P and L statement, I did pass those comments along already to Sonny.
Oh, good, okay, thank you.
And it is a P and L statement for that event. I know the timeframe's kind of ambiguous, but that was kind of what she said, but she did imply to me that she has no problem putting date on there and other information.
You're saying that the total event expenses of $396 is something that she says is going to be from 2018 event?
That was the 2017 event, sorry.
Yeah, it doesn't say that, so I didn't, you know, I didn't know. Okay, thank you, Jay.
The only question I have is on the list of the food trucks, could we be provided where they are coming from, or how many are from Madeira Beach or other nearby cities?
They are working with the, I forget the name of it, but it is a, within Pinellas, it's a food truck organization.
Okay.
It's a membership-based thing. And then they still are doing the purchase of the seafood from those three local vendors that she mentioned. Part of the food truck process, we are going to have an extensive, you know, we've always had the fire inspection portion of it, but part of our updated event process that you guys will see later this month is, we are working with the fire department to, you know, with the new fire inspector. He's very adamant about getting these inspections done properly and as often as possible to make sure that it's a safe event. So, that's, part of that requirement of that list of food trucks is for that. So, we're going to see these people a lot, and we're going to get to know them. If they cause problems in our city, we're going to put them on a list that says, no matter whose event it is, they can't come back if they don't want to follow our rules, so.
Jay, I have one question. We talked about the trucks using their own electricity, not plugging into the city. Is that going to be the same with the tents?
Not 100% sure.
With the, with the use of the tent area, I have a question that is being, is working its way through Duke Energy with respect to metering the usage of the electric in the event that it happens as it. The event, however, one of the things that the representative from Duke Energy communicated to us is that if you, as a city, are effectively charging for consumption of electric, the, you can find yourself in a situation where you're in violation of the commission or what have you, the energy commissioner or whatever, the regulatory government agency that deals with rates and those types of things. So, one of the things, they're going to provide some information back to me to say yes, no, or indifferent. Other cities have looped that in as part of the fees for the rental of any particular facilities, but the contract that we do have that is articulated here, or there's a section articulated in the agenda that it does include for electric, so any use of electric. So, assuming that we get the comments back from representatives from Duke Energy that says, yes, you can effectively ask for reimbursement for your electrical costs associated exclusively with this event, the contract that is on the agenda tonight has language that allows for that. So I just need to get that information back from the representatives from Duke Energy and say, yes, the City of Madeira Beach can do that. Another option, if we did not want to allow for power, or if we wanted to find out what a flat rate or the rental rate for that is, we can, we can do some research on that. Some other cities have looked at the, looked at events like that, and they have actually turned off the power receptacles, but when you look at the reconnect charge, you have to make a decision whether it's worth effectively taking that measure. But that's something that we're still researching on staff, but we do have the question into the representatives from Duke Energy, because I asked that specific question.
Thank you. Because it is basically just a pass-through. We're just trying to recoup our expenses from, it's not like we're charging them for electricity per se, it's, we're just recouping what they've used.
Yeah. And from an event standpoint, I will say this, you know, again, going through this special events process that we're revamping, for an event like that, if we were to shut down the power, I mean, we just spent, I don't know the exact number, but that grant to put all that electric in the past previously, provided us the opportunity for when these events do take place, we're not pulling in these giant generators that make noise and have, you know, diesel off-put and all sorts of stuff for an event. It kind of makes it undesirable. So, obviously, our best angle is to go with some sort of fee structure, as long as it does follow those policies, to make sure that we are recuperating costs and allowing them to run an event that's not noisy and polluting and all that stuff.
You know, they put boxes on all those outlets, and a padlock on every one of them in the past.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's just happened in the past month.
Well, and that was because folks were charging cellphones and doing whatever else they wanted to do while.
Coffee makers are the best ones.
Yeah, so, but yeah, we'll look into that and make sure, because there's, you know, there's no reason, you know, that the whole free ride thing is going away here, so.
All right, the floor is now open for public comment. Floor is closed. Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see you.
John Hendrix, 569 Normandy Road. You touched on it a little bit. I don't think you want all those vendors with little generators behind their tents running. You won't be able to walk around the place because of carbon monoxide. You need to supply the electric. You're going to have a worst-case situation if you've got carbon monoxide all over the place with all those folks walking around. Just think about that, okay? Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, just to state for the record, it's the Florida Public Service Commission. So I just wanted to, that is the entity that regulates the charging of utilities, especially specific to electric. So, as soon as I hear something from Duke Energy, I'll provide the Board with a memorandum as to how staff is going to address this particular issue.
Okay, thank you. Any more public comment? Public comment is now closed. Any more discussion from the Board? All right, do we have a? Motion? Something?
I make a motion that we approve the Johns Pass Seafood Festival contract revised 082418.
Any more discussion from the Board?
And, and Madam Mayor, to incorporate the modifications that staff has presented, correct?
Yes.
Will City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakland?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
I just, I can't support it based on the information that we've received and the way it's been put together. So, I know it's going to happen, and I guess I can say, I know it's going to happen, I would be a horrible person, but I can't say yes. I'd have to say no.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Dauter?
Yes.
Mayor Blythe?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, under Old Business, is the Marina Audit Discussion.
Madam Mayor, members of the Board, pursuant to conversations that we've had at previous workshops and, I believe, during a couple of the budget sessions, staff proceeded forward with engaging the firm of Carl's Rigs and Ingram to complete an audit on marine operations, Marina operations. To date, staff has expended approximately $15,000 to proceed forward with the analysis. And in order to complete the analysis and look at all the internal controls and some of the operations to provide some recommendations for improvements, it would cost an additional $35,000 to complete the study, to bring a total cost of $50,000. At this particular moment, staff is recommending approval of the additional $35,000 to complete the analysis that is currently ongoing with this particular firm. In the event that the Board wishes to cease this audit, then the findings will be wrapped up as far as what they've looked at at this particular moment, and a report will be issued to the city. But in order to complete and look at all the operations and provide us a thorough analysis, staff believes that the additional $35,000 spend is required. So at this particular moment, myself and Finance Director Pierce are prepared to answer any questions that you may have. And I do want to also state, the annual audit that we do as a city that were required by statute in conversations that the Finance Director has had with the auditor, he did mention that there are certain things that he would recommend that we take a look at over at the Marina operations because of just the nature of that type of operation. So this is really following up on the conversation that was had internally with staff to move forward, and obviously, the Board has mentioned it in previous conversations. So, staff stands prepared to answer any questions, and Director Pierce can provide some additional insight if necessary.
My comment is the fact that exactly what is it that they're looking for, what is the problem there? What is so wrong over there that it's going to cost us $50,000 to do this?
At this particular moment, they're looking at, you know, some of our cash handling policies, they're looking at best management practices, they're looking at our security, they're looking at some of our accounting measures, they're looking at our financial systems. So, as far as specifics as to what they're going to provide, I cannot communicate that at this particular moment because I don't have all that information available to me at this moment. So, they're looking at a litany of different things, and then are going to provide us a recommendation. Some are going to be measures that we have to take over a couple of years because of the costs associated. Some are things that we're going to have to effectively modify immediately. So at this particular moment, specifically, I can't communicate what are the things that they're going to tell us that we need to make some changes and modifications. I know that one of the things that they have communicated to me is the security on the site. We need to make some improvements on the security of the site.
And, and Madam Mayor and Commissioners, when John Hauser was doing the audit, he did run some tests. He did talk to me about some of those tests and raised some concerns. There was a time element involved and did not, you know, did not go into his scope, and he had exceeded his scope. And I made those comments known to the acting City Manager at the time, and then when Mr. Evans came on board, made those comments to him as well.
Do we need to make a motion in a second before we discuss it?
We need to do a public comment first.
Okay.
So the initial audit that they were doing was the $15,000. Now, to go further into it, they're looking for an additional $35,000.
That is correct. That is correct.
So for the $15,000, it seems like a good auditor, if they're going to do an audit, you know, they would, they would see it with the regular audit, if there's a problem, they would see it upfront. I mean, I don't understand the $50,000, I really don't. That's, that's a lot of money to put forth on something like this.
This is a forensic audit that goes much deeper than what our city auditor would go. Our city auditor would run some tests, and that's basically it. Instead of, in the past, he's physically gone to some of these locations with, you know, under time constraints, but, you know, he ran some of these tests and raised some of these concerns. And the forensic audit is a type of audit that drills down deeper and goes into much more detail and much more time than our city auditor could spend.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, one of the things I think, as a city, I think we also need to look at some of our major cost centers holistically and looking to do some type of analysis similar to this, if not this, when you look at your parking revenue that generates well over $2 million a year, or even if you look at some of your recreational operations where there's, looking at cash transaction, credit transactions, making sure we're consistent with policy. Because they're not just looking at the monetary aspects of it, they're looking at, if we have an ordinance in place, are we compliant with the ordinance? Are we making sure that if we are, you know, taking a late fee, are we applying the late fee consistent amongst all those folks that are behind in their, in their charges, et cetera? So, there's a multitude of different things that any type of, or forensic auditor, any type of audit would look at, but this is specifically to that operation. But I do want to publicly state, I think this is the type of thing that we need to look at all our major cost centers, and whether we do it every other year, or we look to institute some type of staff accounting, but I do think that what's going to end up coming out of situations like this is, we're going to find out, do we have the appropriate staffing in the Finance Department to assist with some of the, you know, cash handling protocols, the credit protocols, is the financial software talking, you know, from what's at City Hall versus the Marina? So there's a lot of things that internal processes, improvements are going to be furnished to us. So, I do think that there is some value associated with that, but until, with the analysis, but until it's complete, I cannot give you, you know, if the $50,000 would recoup or generate, you know, $25,000, $40,000, $50,000 of additional revenue until the auditors complete the analysis. And the reason that we are requesting to go forward also is, they haven't looked at the fuel operation and the process associated with how we buy fuel, how fuel's consumed, et cetera. And obviously, that's a major cost center, well over a million dollars for the city. So we thought it was prudent to definitely have some type of analysis and report done on that to provide that to the Board, because we didn't want to give you an incomplete analysis, especially with that item outstanding.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Yes, I really thought about this long and hard, too. I really felt that when discussion first came up, that the $15,000 I really felt that when discussion first came up, that the $15,000 was not gonna do it, okay? I think that that was a very conservative approach to it. I think that looking into any kind of anything that has never been done before is going to open up more things, okay? Is going to bring, elicit more questions and respond to that. So, and I think as someone who certainly ran on fiscal responsibility, I thought, oh my God, this is crazy. But I think it's money well spent. So I think we should go forward with it. Thank you.
Public comment?
Certainly. Floor is now open for public comment.
Tom Edwards, Protected Address. Just a couple of comments. You're looking at expanding the Marina in the future with high and dry and facilities there. Will the auditor make suggestions on that type of process and procedure? Something to consider is, because they're drilling down and they're setting policies and where you might have problems. You look at what the City of Clearwater just went through in the Recreation Department, where they had an employee that's supposed to collect money, supervisor's supposed to receive it within 24 hours, it's supposed to be turned in. And they've got an internal investigation going on right now with the City of Clearwater over the Recreation Department handling money. And the City Manager's waiting for that audit to be completed before he disciplines. So, again, I think this is a good procedure is to go ahead and have a financial audit that drills down. This is a forensic audit, as Walt said. I've seen those occur, they're very good. And I'd just like to make it future-proof, so when we do a high and dry and that type of thing, that we only have to do this one time.
Hi, my name's Roger Pryor, 223 144th Avenue, Madera Beach. My general question is, if we're going to do an audit, is he looking at boards? Is he looking at outlets? Is he doing power drains? What, is this just a money audit? Is he just looking at the flow of the cash? What is he doing at the Marina? There are so many things over there. Just like pavement, just like docks, just like gasoline, just like boats, insurance. It's a great big deal over there. Based on what I understand, I don't understand what he's gonna do. I'd like to see a flow chart or some sort of a chart that says, I'm gonna look at all these items and here's where I'm going with them. Thank you.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore Drive. Truly, I must have missed it, the original $15,000. So my question is, this audit was caused by some type of a reason. Was there red flags that were thrown up that said that there's an issue? And if there isn't, why are we having it? That's the question. Are we gonna have, you talked about it briefly, is there gonna be a return on investment on this? Is this showing a better way to operate the facility? Or a different way that would be more effective? Or is this a punitive audit? I think what a lot of people might be looking at this is saying it's a punitive audit to the people that work in the Marina. I don't know, what is it? It's, it's hard to understand. You know, you guys don't answer questions while you're up there. But I would like to know, from Mr. Pierce, he must have found something, or when he talked to the individual, that there was some red flags. Shouldn't that be public knowledge? Thank you.
Reese Noran, 363 Medallion, still your closest neighbor. This item, I have two comments on. The first is, to those who are not at all familiar with why this audit came at this time, it sort of has the odor of retribution because the party who runs the Marina is involved in a legal matter with one of the directors. The second comment is, we cannot afford $25,000 to the water taxi, which I think is sort of a shame because we do have good water for people to see a boat ride or make it a taxi. Maybe we're approaching it the wrong way, but we can't put $25,000 investment into that. But yet, we can spend $50,000 on an audit that we don't know whether it's gonna reveal a dime's worth of savings or anything. So if you're using $50,000 as bait, you should catch an awfully big fish for it. Thank you.
This is a recording. John Hendrix, 569 Normandy Road. I'm on the Budget Committee. This is a lot of money. We just got through reviewing the budget. This was not in the budget. Frankly, this is the first I've heard of it. I heard about security cameras for the Marina. I didn't hear about this. Why didn't we hear about this? Why doesn't it show in the budget? There's a lot going on here, under the surface. I do know that's true, that someone at the Marina does have some legal things going on with one of our Commissioners. I don't know if that's part of what's going on, but, but I'm very curious as to why another $35,000 didn't show up in the budget. I'd like that question answered.
Lorie Tyner, 4996, Miramar Drive. To do with the audit, all right? I guess everybody really wants to know what red flags came up, and I hope that y'all will address it and let us know what is put in the thought for us to have more of an audit, okay? But the thing is, if y'all are doing the forensic audit on it, there's a lot of departments in the city, okay? You're not gonna be able to do just a partial on them because what they do there at the Marina affects the Parks and Rec. It affects the Finance Department, it affects, so it's going all around. So if you're gonna be doing this, it's gonna cost us a lot more money to do it properly. And if you're gonna spend the money, you need to do it, it'll have to be for the whole, the whole city, basically, or you will not get it right. So, it's according to whether, if you're gonna do it, you're gonna have to commit on doing the whole big thing, or you're not gonna get it. Because you never know what happens when it leaves that one little department, okay? It just all goes downhill. But, two, in order for people to know a little bit better, we really do need to be told what the red flags are that is warranting or wanting to spend more money on it. But just remember, it affects every department. So if you're gonna do it, you might as well do it right, and it be every single department. But that's a decision you're gonna have to make, or you never know if we're getting it right or not.
Any more public comment? Public comment is now closed.
Madam Mayor, if I may, there was one question that I think has germane to the conversation. The monies is going to be 2018 monies. So funds are gonna be encumbered from the 2018 monies. It's not going to be monies from the fiscal year 2019 budget. So that's why those conversations did not ensue with the Budget Committee. Once the audit is complete and analysis is provided and there is findings, that document becomes a public record for public consumption. So they will provide their recommendations, they will provide, if they found anything, if they didn't find anything, all that information will be made available once it's complete. So, as far as the conversations that the Finance Director had with the acting manager and with the auditor, it's consistent with, they believe that there should be an additional audit or some type of analysis done on some of the processes that are occurring at the Marina operation. Effectively, to do that, at the first onset, we said, let's engage an audit firm to come in here and do a preliminary look at what, exactly what was happening in conversations that the audit firm has had with staff. They have said, in order to complete the audit and look at everything and provide you a comprehensive report, we effectively would need the additional monies to go ahead and do that. Once that information is available, obviously, staff will have the opportunity to look at the analysis and say, yes, this is some areas of improvement. No, these are some things where there may have been some miscalculation or some errors, or there are some things that the audit firm may have missed themselves, vice versa. So, it's not that we're taking a punitive approach. We're taking an approach that, that is an enterprise fund and is to be ran as a business. So every business goes through some type of process. And if time allowed for it, the auditor would have done some additional pressure testing on the Marina operation. Unfortunately, because of what was occurring in the organization at that time, he communicated it to the Finance Director that he thinks that this is something we should look at. Director Pierce and I had the conversation about it, the board had discussions about it. And now we're at the situation where, in order to complete it and provide you with a full, comprehensive analysis as what's going on, some areas of improvement, some things that we're doing exceptional, those types of things, we need to have this completed. And I think it would be beneficial for us to wait till the analysis is done before we draw any conclusions or come to any assumptions on the analysis. If we decided to stop midway and restart this, it will only end up costing us more. And I do believe that we need to look at other cost centers, other revenue generating line items in the future, and budget forward accordingly, so we can look at making sure that we are good stewards with all the resources that we have available at our disposal. So, I just wanted to state that for the record, Madam Mayor.
Any more discussion from the board?
I have a few things. Number one, you know, I feel it's our fiduciary responsibility, as the Commissioners, to look after the assets and the money of the city, you know? And I think that's what we were hired to do. I don't know if the city has ever had an audit. I cannot find any, anything that shows that it's ever had an audit. You know, any business or operation should be audited, period. I don't care how big or how small, if there's cash involved, even if there's not cash involved, they should be audited. You know, when you go buy stocks in a company, you're basing that on the audit that somebody did. They, you know, hey, we're trying to look after the stakeholders of this city, the residents of this city. That's kind of the way I look at it. That, you know, a small business that handles cash, or a large business, and we are a large business, you know, needs to be audited. And I think the City Manager said it correctly, maybe we need to come back every two years, you know? Yet I think this first time is gonna be more costly than, you know, two years from now if we go back into whatever department. It'll be less expensive because they'll have the previous records of that. I think, once again, as one person brought up, you know, or brought up, a couple brought up, I think all departments need to be done. Anybody that touches cash, that department needs to be done, you know? I'm not saying anybody's dishonest, but I'm just saying the temptation is there. I'm sorry, but that's just kind of the way I see it. And being our responsibility to look after the assets of this city. And if we're not willing to look after the assets of this city, we shouldn't be sitting up here. Then we need to put somebody else up here, you know, that's willing to do it. So if you say, oh, we're spending too much money, you know, we're, how large is our budget, Walt?
18 million.
18 million, so 50,000 is a drop in the bucket, really, when we're talking about this. And if they come up and find nothing wrong, God bless them, you know? But we still need to do each department. But if they come up and find something wrong, it needs to be corrected, you know? How we do the operation, or, you know, what adjustments we need to make to make it, you know, so there isn't no questions, you know, in the future. So, you know, I just really, really believe this needs to be done. And it should have been done a long time ago, and we talked about it, I know, when we first came, when the three of us first came on the commission, we, it was brought up and it was pushed aside. It was brought up and it was pushed aside. I'm glad we're finally getting to that, that point because I do believe it's our fiduciary responsibility to the stakeholders of this city that we look after their money. You know, if we don't, we're being, you know, we're not doing our job, period. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do the additional $35,000 to Carl's Rigs and Ingram to complete the Marina audit.
I second.
Any more discussion? Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Doutor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
No.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Mayor Blaine?
Yes.
Our next item is Ordinance 2018-10, Establishing a Millage Rate for Fiscal Year 2019. First reading and public hearing.
Madam Mayor, if the clerk could read the ordinance description.
Ordinance 2018-10, An Ordinance of the City of Madera Beach, Establishing the Millage Rate for Fiscal Year 2019, Providing and Announcing the Name of the Taxant Authority, The Rollback Millage Rate, The Percentage Increase Over the Rollback Millage Rate, And The Millage Rate to Be Levied, Providing for Reading in Its Entirety, And Providing for an Effective Date.
And Madam Mayor and Commissioners, Florida Statute, Section 200.065 Requires the Adoption of the Millage Rate by Separate Vote and Prior to Adoption of the Budget. And the indicating of certain things which are outlined in the Sections 1 through 5, the name of the tax authority is the City of Madera Beach. The rollback rate, the rollback millage rate for fiscal year 2019 is 2.0514 per 1,000. The fiscal year 2019 proposed millage rate is 7.24% higher than the rollback rate. The millage rate to be levied for fiscal year 2019 shall be 2.2000 per 1,000. And this ordinance should become effective immediately upon its adoption.
Comment from the board? Floor is now open for public comment on this item.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore. I looked at the budget, and it's pretty huge, actually. But we've increased revenue as far as parking and some other things. Why are we raising the millage rate at this point until we find out what's happening? Is our budget gonna be higher than what is gonna be recovered from the millage rate this year? Because you're increasing the millage rate. Am I misunderstanding this?
We're not increasing the millage rate. The millage rate is staying the same as it was last year.
Okay.
The increase, if anyone sees increases in their ad valorem or into their effective tax rate, is because the value of the asset went up. So it's the same millage rate, but if the value of the asset goes up, then of course, you know, you end up...
So your taxes are gonna go up? It's the same thing?
But you're not increasing the effective millage rate.
Okay. So you're still trying to get more money?
The city...
From the owners of property in the City of Madera Beach?
The city would generate... The city would generate, I think, approximately, what, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of additional revenue?
Approximately, yes.
Yeah, associated with, uh, the increase that we experienced as part of inflation and, you know, the cost, well, property values going up in its entirety.
But we increased revenues in other areas, why do we need to do that?
Your, actually, the general fund budget where the ad valorem revenue goes into is thirty-two thousand dollars less than last year. So as far as the general fund budget, which is, which is the city's largest fund, it's actually lower than it was in fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. Now, overall, yes, the effective rate, the, the tax rate is the same, but that's consistent in any community that has received a property, uh, increase in the assessed value, and that's based on the data that's provided to us from the tax collector and the assessors, or the assessor, and then ultimately the tax collector. So there is an incremental increase, but if it's a save our homes, obviously, you don't experience the, the seven point, I think it's a seven percent, little over a seven percent increase.
Okay, I was totally mistaken on how that worked, but it's still an increase to the homeowners in the long run.
Yeah, effectively, yes.
And you've, and you've already increased revenues in other ways. So that was my question, why we need to do it.
The taxable value of all the property in Madeira Beach actually exceeded a little over seven percent. So anytime you have a, um, a, an increase in the taxable value, then in keeping the millage the same, you will have a tax increase.
But there's a lot of other areas that, that our millage rate isn't even affecting it. You have all those other things on your tax bill that, that go up that we have no control over. There's juvenile welfare board, PSTA, Pinellas County, I mean, there's a whole litany of...
Out of your, your entire tax bill, about thirty percent of your entire tax bill comes to the city of Madeira Beach. And for an entire, you know, obviously, year or so, when you look at whatever the average tax bill is, and I think we did that as part of the survey, I think the, on annual, the average Madeira Beach resident pays about six hundred and thirty dollars to the city of Madeira Beach, which is less than what folks pay for their cell phone service on an annual basis, to put things into perspective. So, and the average in totality, the average tax bill, I think, is over fifty-three hundred dollars annually for, um, the residents of Madeira Beach. So out of that, you, only a small portion ends up coming to the city of Minnesota, the city of, uh, Madeira Beach.
They can only increase your taxes on your property by three percent, is that not correct, if you've, if you're homesteaded?
Some properties are capped.
Yeah, I think it's three percent.
Yeah, the homesteaded properties.
The homesteaded properties, yeah.
You can only go up three percent a year, so. And then our, our, our costs have gone up more than three percent with, with raises for the employees, for, I mean, just A, B, C, D, everything else that's come along for, you know, our cost for our fire department, our cost for our police, our cost for, you know, employees, our health benefits, everything else is going up.
Your, your contract with the sheriff's department went up by three percent, and that's pretty consistent annually. Um, insurance, we were able to negotiate, um, zero increase, but the original proposal was ten percent increase. Also included in the budget is a four percent increase for all non-represented employees, and we're actually in the process of still negotiating with the firefighters, so that's something that we'll end up bringing back to the board. But cost for fuel, uh, just cost of doing business, um, goes up in, in the grand scheme of things when you look at some of the investments that we have to make as a city, and we're fortunate that we have that revenue from parking, because that, in essence, helps subsidize general government operations by us having that opportunity when people visit our community and having that revenue stream. Or if you didn't have that revenue stream, your millage rate would probably be double what it is now. So, um, that's one of the things that we are fortunate to have in our community, but it is the lowest millage rate of any community that I've ever worked in, and it is something that, when you do see the taxable value go up or the taxable value go down, you, it comes in ebbs and flows, but we're just now, this year, and the finance director can correct me if I'm wrong, this year is the first time where we actually reached pre-two thousand and eight levels as far as the taxable value in our community. So it just shows you from the recession, we're finally back to where we were prior to the recession, and we're two thousand and eighteen, and that really started in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. So we as a city and as local governments just take a little bit longer to recover.
With, with this additional income of, I say a hundred and eighty or a hundred and eight, I couldn't hear you.
Hundred and eighty, I believe.
You know, will we be able to, um, fix some of the things that we've been asked to fix, such as the lights on the ball field, I mean, just things like that, will any of that go towards that, or is it just going to go towards, um, the raises and stuff like that?
Realistically, and the finance director can correct me if I'm wrong, most of the increase that you was, a large portion of that would go to pay for pay raises if you looked at the cost to do pay raises for all your, uh, non-represented employees and then ultimately your represented employees. So there's just some incremental, um, you know, monies that may be left over to address other things, but, and, and that's why in this budget, you'll see that we utilize some of the monies we had for capital expenditures with that BP to be able to do some of the things that we traditionally would not be able to do if we didn't tap into that, um, to that funding stream. Because there, there's no way if we didn't do that, the CIP, the Capital Improvements Plan, would be significantly smaller if we had to use cash on hand to do some of the things that we needed to do.
Thank you.
And, and we have to read the, make sure we read the ordinance in its entirety to include the, the whereas provisions.
I can do that. Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash ten, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, establishing the millage rate for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, providing and announcing the name of tax and authority, the rollback millage rate, the percentage increase over the rollback millage rate, and the millage rate to be levied, providing for reading in its entirety and providing for an effective date. Whereas Florida statutes, section two hundred dot oh six five, requires the adoption of the millage rate by separate vote and prior to the adoption of the budget, and whereas Florida statute, section two hundred dot oh six five, requires that prior to adoption of the millage levy ordinance, the following be publicly announced, the name of the tax and authority, the rollback millage rate, the percentage increase over the rollback millage rate, and the millage rate to be levied, and whereas, in no event may the millage rate adopted exceed the millage rate tentatively adopted. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, section one, the name of the tax and authority is the city of Madeira Beach. Section two, the rollback millage rate for fiscal year two thousand nineteen is two point zero five one four per one thousand dollars. Section three, the fiscal year two thousand nineteen proposed millage rate is seven point two four percent higher than the rollback rate. Section four, the millage rate to be levied for fiscal year two thousand nineteen shall be two point two zero 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 per one thousand dollars. Section five, the ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption.
Any more discussion from the board?
Walt, is that section three, the fiscal year two thousand nineteen proposed millage rate is seven point two four percent higher than the rollback rate?
That's what, yes, that's what's on DR four twenty, I guess. Walt? Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
That's coming from the DR four twenty that we get as part of the TRIM requirements. And if you want, I shared that document with the, with the commission, um, I think on the last budget, um, hearing that we had, and it is on that floor. One thing on the bottom of that, uh, second page, just, uh, clarification that Claire and I caught, on the second page on the bottom, says ordinance two thousand seventeen dash ten, should be two thousand eighteen dash ten, just a correction.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. Um, I move that ordinance twenty eighteen dash ten, establishing the millage rate for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, be approved on the first reading and public hearing.
Second. Any more discussion? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Blunt?
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance two thousand eighteen dash eleven, adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand eighteen, and ending September thirty, two thousand nineteen, first reading and public hearing.
And Madam Mayor and Commissioners, if the clerk could read the title and the whereas's, and I will read the, uh, budget amounts.
Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash eleven, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand eighteen, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, providing for reading in its entirety and providing for an effective date. Whereas Florida statute, section one sixty-six point two four one, requires the adoption of a budget each fiscal year, and whereas, the amount available from taxation and other sources, including balances brought forward from prior years, must equal the total appropriations for expenditures and reserves, and whereas, at a minimum, the adopted budget must show for each fund as required by law and sound financial practices, budgeted revenues and expenditures by organizational unit, which are at least at the level of detail required for the annual financial report required under section two-one-eight point three-two, paragraph one, and whereas, the adopted budget must regulate expenditures of the municipality, and an officer of a municipal government may not expend or contract for expenditures in any fiscal year except as pursuant to the adopted budget, and whereas, the city of Madeira Beach tentative fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget is balanced, is presented at the level of detail required to file the annual financial report, and shall regulate expenditures of the city for a period beginning October one, two thousand eighteen, and ending September thirty of two thousand nineteen. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, section one, the fiscal two thousand nineteen budget shall be governed by the following funding sources and uses.
And the funding sources, governmental and proprietary funds, governmental funds for the general fund, and this, these are, um, pretty much revenue numbers, and I will just run and give you the total for the general fund, and the total funding sources for the general fund is nine million, nine thirty-four, eight hundred. And then the next fund is the local option sales tax fund, the total funding sources is four hundred and, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred. Archibald fund totals funding sources, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred. Building fund, total fund sources, seven hundred and eight thousand. Gas tax fund, total fund sources, total funding sources, a hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred. Debt service fund, total funding sources, one million, three hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred. And then the prior, proprietary, proprietary funds, sanitation fund, total funding sources, one million, three hundred and seventy, and two hundred. Stormwater fund, total funding sources, one million, three hundred and seventy, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred. Marina fund, total funding sources, two million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred. And so the total funding sources governmental and proprietary funds is eighteen million, two-two-nine, zero-zero-zero. The funding uses for governmental and proprietary funds, um, starting with the governmental funds, general fund, the total funding uses is nine million, nine hundred, thirty-four thousand, eight hundred. Local option sales tax fund, total funding uses, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred. Archibald fund, total funding uses, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred. Building fund, total funding uses, seven hundred and eight thousand. Gas tax fund, total funding uses, a hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred. Debt service fund, total funding uses, one million, three hundred and eighteen, and then two hundred. Prioritary funds, um, sanitation fund, total funding uses, one million, three hundred and seventy, and two hundred. Stormwater fund is, and total funding uses is one million, three ninety-seven, six hundred. And Marina fund, total funding uses, two million, four-four-nine, six hundred. And the total funding uses governmental and proprietary funds, eighteen million, two-two-nine, zero-zero-zero, which also equals the total, um, which I previously read, the total funding, um, um, sources. So the, both of those match. Um, I just wanted to make, go over some talking points real quick. City manager alluded to the fact that since the proposed, uh, budget, uh, the, uh, there was a change in the ad valorem slightly by about three hundred, three thousand, four hundred, and basically that was due to the, the difference between the taxable value at the June estimate decreased just slightly, um, since we got the July numbers, and, um, that, that accounts for that difference. So it just decreased slightly, and again, all funds is eighteen million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And key points as far as the general fund revenue, um, just to make this clear, the, um, the, the, the revenue did decrease a little bit overall, um, from the previous year by about thirty-two thousand, seven hundred, or by point three-three percent, and this is the general fund. And the reason for that is, last year, there was the FEMA reimbursement that was budgeted in the revenue, that was one point three million. Well, this year in the general fund, um, due to the stance of the, of the board, of the commission toward that FEMA and FEMA projects, that has decreased to five hundred thousand, and that's, that program is slowly, um, as you know, going away. So that accounts for the decrease. Um, parking has decreased, and you may wonder why? Um, the, even though the, there's a fifty percent, uh, fifty cent increase by resolution by the commission, that fifty cents is, is in a cash reserve account for the general fund, and later in another agenda item, uh, this evening, um, we're going to be asking to set up, uh, the same cash reserve fund, fund for the Archibald fund. So the, the increase in the parking by fifty cents is going, based on the resolution that you, that the, uh, commission approved, is going into a cash reserve account. The other difference is, we made over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, um, tickets, um, and other type of violations in the previous year. This year, we're seeing half of that mainly due to the new machines, and that might extend into the new year. We want to be more educational toward our guests and visitors and, and using the machines, and thus has dropped, um, some of the, uh, ticketing and violation. The, um, as far as the, and the city manager mentioned the BP lawsuit, um, took, we're planning to take two hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred from that to fund some ju, uh, capital activities. And the expenditures in the capital, uh, expenditures in the general fund, we created a separate legal, um, services department, so, and this would impact all the attorneys that we deal with, um, not just Ralph, um, but our labor attorney, and then any cost from our, um, land use attorney. One of the reasons for doing this is to better track our utility expenses instead of having it in the city manager's budget. Also, for better tracking purposes, we created a, uh, a new commission, um, a new department for the commission as well, for better tracking those expenditures as well. The, um, there was a transfer, inter-fund transfer from Archibald, um, and the building fund to the general fund. Archibald, it totaled a hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred. Basically, that's the cost of, uh, three, um, staff members. We, we are still analyzing the costing of these positions and, which is still ongoing, and hope to have a resolution of, of that, uh, within five to six months. Uh, the building and inter-fund transfer... The building interfund transfer mainly dealt with code compliance work that the deputy sheriffs are doing to assist the building department. We also refunded the debt balloon payment that we were looking at. So instead of looking at a payment of $1.2 million in November, we're looking at a payment of $344,000. The sanitation fund did increase. And I want to make it clear, as the City Manager indicated, our general fund actually went down from the previous year. And I mentioned a couple of reasons why. The other funds actually increased. One fund that increases, sanitation fund, increased by $71,000 due to the recycling increases that we went over in the previous budget committee. Stormwater also got proper funding for the $137,000 project, which will take place next year. And the CIP, in a total of all funds for capital, which is not just improvements, but for equipment, there's a total of $1.6 million. And within that, the general fund total, within that $1.6 million, is $696,600. And of that amount, $271,600 is coming from the BP allocation. One thing that was made in our budget workshops is going forward in the CIP with all the stormwater projects remaining in the future. We are looking at the possibility in 2020 and looking at funding of some projects of at least $6 million and getting started with some of the stormwater projects that exist in the future. I just want to say a thank you to the Budget Committee, which consists of Roger Pryor, June Muns, Tom Edwards, Doreen Moore, and John Hendricks. They provided a lot of good input during this budget process. It was new to me, not having that last year. And like you said, there was a lot of good input and good discussion during those meetings. And I valued their support and the comments that they had made.
Floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is now closed. Any more discussion from the board?
I still don't like the way you're taking the $200,000 out of Archibald Fund to fund the three people. Because you're basically taking the same three people that were in Archibald last year and just moving them somewhere else to where they really should be. But, you know, it's got to get worked out somehow of what those people actually do.
Yep, we will.
So you're all working on that?
Yes, we will.
I just hate it that the whole thing is funded out of there. The other thing that's always bothered me for years is the recreation budget of it being almost a half million dollars. It's $903,000 this year, with only expected revenues of $382,000. So with that, I would really like to start looking inside of it a little bit. By, at some point, could we, like, have a... See how one of the programs breaks even? And what's our cost on it? Like, take summer camp. And take all the expenses and find out what a cost per child actually is. And look inside of that to see. It just seems like it's so unbalanced. And I never could figure out anything of where it was that way. I thought if we'd look at least one program, we could see inside of what's going on.
Madam Mayor, members of the board, to that point, certainly myself and the Recreation Director can get together and look at some of the programs and look at some of the full cost accounting and the fees associated with it, and look at opportunities for revenue generation or opportunities for some efficiencies. And bring, maybe it's not just summer camp. Maybe it's summer camp and maybe a special event or maybe a couple of things that we can bring to a workshop and make some changes and modifications and get some direction from the board as to how do we effectively look to incrementally try to break even as much as we possibly can. Obviously, we know there's some things that are, you know, hard to break even on. But certainly, I believe the Recreation Director is committed to looking at it from an entrepreneurial approach and perspective. And the revenue opportunities have enhanced over the years. But I still think there's some additional things that we can do as an organization to address that. So we can definitely put that on the first workshop in October, break down a program, show the costs, and then have some additional conversations with the board. Because we may find that what we charge for summer camp or what we charge for another program, there may be an opportunity for some incremental fee increases or looking at it, some type of rec card, non-resident resident program to help generate additional revenue to fund recreation services. So that's something that we can be prepared to discuss with the board at a regular board workshop in October.
I wasn't really, I would like to know what that break even is for summer camp. I'm not sure that it would be cost effective for any family to ever be able to afford it. And that's probably why cities are stuck with recreation programs like that. But it would be just good knowledge to know where we were and how it affects the overall budget of it never getting anywhere. And it's just taking a look inside of it. And that's really why I was going there. I don't think it'll ever pay for itself. And I understand that. But I just want to know what's causing that.
We can certainly bring that information to the board.
I would just like to say, I think we worked very, very diligently from the, all the comments and the recommendations from the Budget Review Committee. And I think as a first time person up here, we just really worked very hard on it. I think that we diligently looked at it. It wasn't a pass through or a puppet-like thing at all. We looked at all these different items. And I think Director Pierce was very, gosh, what's the word? Patient with us at times, I'm sure, okay? So I appreciate that. So, thank you. Yeah, I'm satisfied. I know that a budget is no more than a plan. You know, it's a budget. Budget, budget, budget. And we will continue to improve on it and continue to look at it. And that's the best resource.
And also, I just will say too, this is the tentative budget. And from here, we will have the adopted budget. And we want to make that even better. The numbers won't change, but cosmetically, we want to make it better because we do want to try to go after the GFOA certificate for the budgeting.
Walt, I do appreciate the fact that you went ahead and listed the attorneys on a separate... Lost my word. But you know I'm talking about listing them stuff. That's right. Yeah, I think that's really good. Because that way, you know, we can keep track of everything. And hopefully, they will follow your suit in giving us a budget or a statement once a month as to where the money's going.
If there's one area where I think that we need to watch, it's the legal. We do have some areas in the legal that have a potential of increasing next year significantly. So this is going to, creating a separate department will force us to keep looking at it.
Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, want to echo the same comments that the Finance Director provided to the Budget Committee. They combed through the budget tirelessly, even showed us where there were some grammatical errors. So they did read all 230-plus pages. This document is about 100 pages more than last fiscal year's budget. But I have to say, I give a lot of kudos to the staff and the department directors for setting up goals and objectives consistent with the overarching goals and objectives that you, as the board, provided to staff as part of your retreat. And what we will do quarterly is we will give you a status update on the department goals and objectives and where we are with regards to accomplishing the items in each department. So we will almost have a report card or a checklist at the end of the budget year to say, we accomplished 80 or 95 percent of the items that were set as goals and objectives as part of the budget process. Because as you try to use this document as a plan, certainly having that overarching goals and objectives from the board and then drilling down into internal operations. If anyone has the opportunity to read this document, you'll be able to understand what is in that department, what that department does, and then what their goals and objectives would be for that fiscal year. And then the backup pages behind that is the line items and then the staffing. So it's a very comprehensive document. We're going to make some improvements as years go on. And ultimately, we do want to receive the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award from the Government Finance Officers Association. So that's on the horizon for us. It may take us a couple of times to get through, you know, some of the edits and comments that they will provide us back. Because the budget document is sent to three independent evaluators from all over the country. And then they critique and provide perspective. And then we will make modifications in subsequent years. And hopefully, we'll be able to at least bring that award home, if not this year, in year two. And we haven't won it as a city, but it's definitely something that Director Pierce and I and the department directors would like to aspire to and make sure that we continue to work with the Budget Committee. I certainly believe that, moving forward, it will be a lot smoother process. And we will give them some time off. And we'll look to meet with them after the first of the year. Because that's when we start preparing for fiscal year 2020. So certainly, we appreciate their efforts and their commitment to the organization and to transparency and good governance and good budgeting.
Mr. City Manager certainly said it very eloquently. But I'd just like to say thank you to the Budget Review Committee because that's a lot of work and takes a lot of time. And I think we all appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you.
I'd like to bring up two things. Walt, we have two books. You know, they said, here's one. Why can't, you know, the pages are numbered. Why can't you just, 20 or 30 pages that were redone, can't say, take these out, put these in? It'd make a lot more sense than walking around with two huge books in the future and wasting all that time and money and effort. I was thinking of, we were thinking of just stopping at the proposed. But we'd had just one significant change, which was the ad valorem. Not that it was a large amount, but we needed to make that change. But we had about 20 cosmetic changes that we wanted to perfect. And actually, going forward with the adopted budget, we do have some other cosmetic things that we want to add and to change. I'm just saying, next year, rather than doing this one and a week later, you know, whatever, give us a different one to say, hey, replace page 6258, whatever it is. We'll try to do that, save money. Save money and it'd just make a lot more sense. Okay.
It'd be a lot clearer to the commission as to what changes were made. Instead of digging through it and making assumptions.
And then you start making notes in one. And then go to the second one and go, now this is the updated one. Now I've got to go back and change my notes or whatever, you know. It's just kind of crazy. We were pressed for time between the proposed and the tentative only because of some of the goals and objectives and interacting with the departments and the Budget Committee. We just, there was a lot of interaction this year that took place. But I hear you, and next year, we'll do better. The second thing, and we talked about it today, was that last year, we asked to have a summary at the end. Basically, you know, each department, their cell phones are listed under that department. How much did we spend on cell phones? So a summary page at the back saying, this is how much we spent. You can buy departments, just a total. You know, uniforms, t-shirts, whatever we spent. You know, anything that's common throughout all the departments, you know. So I don't have to go through this page, over to this page, to this page to figure out how much we spent on cell phones. It's a very, very good example. And we still have, we still want to try to do that. Right. And I talked to Walt about that today. That, to me, gives me a better picture of what's going on versus trying to flip through the whole thing and trying to figure it out.
And one of the things we're also going to do, Commissioner, is we're going to create a budget in brief. So it will be probably a two-page pamphlet or maybe a trifle that's going to give you all the budget highlights and some of the major budget modifications. So in the event that you're speaking to a group of constituents or someone wants to get the Cliff Notes version of the 230-page document, they'll be able to pick that up at City Hall. It'll be available online. We're also going to get two bound copies of the budget and put it up at the library that if people want to, you know, peruse the city's budget or they have a hard time sleeping at night, they can use this. And there's no prescription medication that would be necessary to help you fall asleep. But certainly, we want to make the budget as accessible, as informative, and allow for people to take a look at city operations and provide some insight. And this will fold into the website as far as our transparency portal, et cetera. So this is the foundation, and then we'll continue to build on it. But we appreciate the input and the support and the feedback from the board, especially coming in as a new manager, getting your direction and establishing core values, mission vision. That's pretty remarkable, the framework and the foundation that this board provided for staff to move forward and get this document where it is today.
Do we need a recommendation? Do we need? Pardon me? Do we need to rec? A motion? We need a motion.
Thank you for the word. I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution 2018-14, I'm sorry, 2018-11, adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018, and ending September 30, 2019, first reading and public hearing.
I'll second. Any more discussion from the board? Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Dowther?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Blunt?
Yes.
One more thing, Mayor and Commissioners. If the clerk can indicate the date and the time for the final public hearing, which is September 18 at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Next we have Resolution 2018-14, Archibald Parking Revenues Allocation of the Additional 50 Cents.
And we mentioned this briefly. This basically is making it clear from an accounting, for an accounting standpoint and auditing standpoint that we're taking the 50 cents of the parking increase. And the previous resolution basically was earmarked for the general fund. And we did create a cash reserve account for that, those funds. And this resolution basically creates the cash reserve and setting the wording straight on how the 50 cents is to be allocated for the parking revenue as it applies to the Archibald Fund. And because this fund is deed restricted or has a deed with it, this increase would have to be allocated per the terms of that deed.
Why can't it just stay in the fund? I don't, you're not, all it says is to be allocated in the...
Don't, yeah, don't get me wrong. The cash reserve will be within the Archibald Fund.
I understand that. But why do you need, you're not allocating it to do anything other than allocated as indicated in the Archibald deed, which is where all the money goes right now.
Madam Mayor, if I may...
I see where you're trying to split it out, but it doesn't make any sense.
Well, we wanted to clean it up because the original resolution addressed all the parking holistically. So we wanted to carve this particular component out and then just reiterate the point that this is treated differently. So this just provides some cleanup to say, yes, everything that we do has to be consistent with the deed restriction because the original resolution contemplated that all the monies for parking, the increase, would be used for, you know, the infrastructure and to pay down the debt. So we just wanted to come back and say, well, this is something that is different, and we need to handle it appropriately. So in the event that someone ever questioned, well, your resolution says that you can utilize the 50 cents for X, Y, and Z, does that apply to the Archibald Fund? We wanted to put that argument to bed by just memorializing it in a resolution. So the same arrangement goes into place, the funding, the monies stay in the Archibald Fund, it just cleans up what occurred in the original.
And it makes it clear for year-end tracking as far as the audit.
So you're going to break it out in a line item, is what you're going to do?
It doesn't show up in a budget, it will show up in a cash reserve account, and we will.
So it's got its own account?
Right. And we will disclose what that is to the Commission as we progress. In the monthly financial statements, I thought it'd be best to highlight what those increases are in the cash reserve for the general fund and Archibald, and keep you informed of how those amounts are increasing.
Floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is closed. Any more discussion?
No, I'd like to make a move that Resolution 2018-14, Archibald Parking Revenue Allocation of Additional 50 Cents be approved on first reading.
Doesn't have to be read by the Clerk?
Sorry. It's getting late, it's past my bedtime, sorry.
Resolution 2018-14, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners for the City of Madeira Beach, Pinellas County, Florida, establishing for the Archibald Fund the percentage allocation for the additional revenues associated with 2018 parking fee increase as proposed in Ordinance 2018-03, and providing for an effective.
You want to read it where I am?
Yeah, I can do it.
No, not now. Now I can. You have to do it again.
I move that Resolution 2018-14, Archibald Parking Revenue Allocation of Additional 50 Cents be approved on first reading.
I'll second. Any more discussion from the board? Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Mayor Blatt?
Yes.
Next, we have the redevelopment, residential redevelopment plan. Mr. Serna?
Good evening, Madam Mayors, members of the Commission. For the record, Louis Serna, Calvin Giordano, and associates are presenting staff comments this evening. This application is for the redevelopment of a single-family residence. The application is submitted in accordance with Section 11097, which allows redevelopment of non-conforming residences if they're essentially within the same footprint, as long as they meet all current building regulations, including FEMA requirements, which would include building to the design flood elevation. The proposal meets the requirements of redevelopment and further improves the setbacks on the east side of the property and improves the parking situation from the current existing home that will be demolished and redeveloped. So we find that this does meet the requirements of redevelopment. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this item on August 13th, 2018, and the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request. The applicant's agent is available this evening, but the Planning Commission and staff do recommend approval of this redevelopment application, RDV 201801, based on the application meeting the intent and criteria for redevelopment.
I think this is something that encourages development in Madeira Beach, and I understand the next-door neighbor is in approval of it as well?
Yes, he is in favor.
Okay.
Didn't we already see this before at some point?
I think we did.
Because I remember the Jeep in the garage. Or is it just common, you put Jeeps in all the garages?
I don't think so. I saw the bicycles this morning when I walked by there. I think it's an excellent example of retaining the neighborhoods by allowing this, that we started it, that it keeps people in Madeira Beach when they want to improve their property. And I think the only thing I mentioned to you was, and I don't know if it's applicable, to make sure that our staff, if there's any, if there's any other thing that has to be signed or inspected with regards to the conversation that we had a few weeks ago on the FEMA, okay, that that certainly be a part of the document if it has, you know, if it's required. I don't know if that was for grants or insurance or what, but.
And this, the plans that were submitted with this are not building-level detailed plans, and those will be submitted later, consistent with these plans, and that will be a part of the review, that it will be FEMA-compliant.
You know, my only concern is make sure that, you know, we meet the FEMA standards, and it says that in here, so that's very important.
Floor is now open for public comment on this item. Floor is closed. Any more comments from the Commission?
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if I should speak, but my name is Jody Beck. I'm the architect of the project. I've been working with the homeowners since last.
Pick up the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was doing it. My name is Jody Beck. I am the architect of the project. I'm at 2710 North Dundee Street in Tampa, and I've been working with the homeowners since March on designing this project and creating a new home for them that will be flood-compliant and code-compliant and kind of bring this property up to what it should be for them to live in, for her and her family. So if you guys have questions, I'm here. I'm not, you know, I have drawings, but I think everybody has seen them, so I'm available if you have any further questions. But we're very excited about this project and excited to be able to improve this property.
Any question for the architect?
I'll make a motion then to go ahead and pass or approve RDV 2018-01, based on the application meeting, the applicant meeting the intent and the criteria for redevelopment.
Second, then?
Second.
Any more discussion? Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Mayor Blatt?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is the City Manager's Evaluation Matrix Evaluation Form.
Madam Mayor, members of the board, this item is to select one of the two evaluation matrix that were proffered as part of this agenda item for the purposes of conducting the annual evaluation of the City Manager's performance. At this particular moment, staff is prepared to answer any questions, but basically, whichever form the board feels more appropriate, for the purposes of the evaluation, I will make the modifications, and then we will have it administered closer to the time in which the evaluation is to be conducted.
Well, I would say after looking at it, I think the second detachment, 5B, is that how that goes? The second evaluation form, I would recommend that one.
The one that starts on page eight.
What it says B on here.
I don't have a B on mine.
The ones they gave you, that's a hundred.
Pardon me, Mayor, did you say, I know I have A and B, okay?
Okay.
It would be the one that has attachment 5B at the top in a little box, so I think it would be.
Oh, wait a minute. I saved the other one, that's okay, great. I know the one she's talking about.
Basically, yeah, it's.
It's B.
Yeah, it gives you, for instance, professional skills and expertise, it gives you out of 25, and then you would have A through E, and you would give assigned points, you know, from 1 to 5 out of 25, and then you would make comments in this particular section.
Yes, that's the one I liked, because I thought it offered more of a comment, more of a subjective type of approach to it.
Would we be using this? My question is, because it says timeline in October, where you're not at a year yet, you know, so where are we at in regards to that?
He missed that mean.
The board decided to do it 30 days prior to an election, so what would happen is the evaluation would occur, you know, if the election's in March, you would do the evaluation effectively around my anniversary date, which is February 26th, so problem.
Start in January.
Okay, so we don't go by these, October thing, October number. Okay.
Yeah.
Looks to me like they're both very similar.
Which one did you say, Madam Mayor?
B.
Okay, we'll go with A then.
Works for me. That's the pleasure of the board. There can be a motion to effectively memorialize the actions to say the.
I make a motion that we use attachment 5B.
Shouldn't we have a public comment first?
Oh, go ahead.
Is there, public comment is now open, public comment is now closed. Go ahead.
I make a motion that we approve attachment 5B for the City Manager's Performance Evaluation Matrix. Period.
You have a second?
I second.
Go ahead. Did you get the second?
Yes, I did.
Any more discussion from the board? Will the City Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Oakley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.
Commissioner Douthat?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinstein?
Yes.
Mayor Blatt?
Yes.
Next, we have Madeira Way Road Closures for Special Events. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the board, this item is to discuss the Madeira Way Road Closure pursuant to the conversations that were had at the last meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Staff wanted to bring this item back for discussions with the board and also schedule it for later on the evening to allow for any of the local businesses to provide a perspective on the road closure. Traditionally, the road closure has, and the crux of the conversation is the market that used to occur on Madeira Way, and so I've asked for the Recreation Director to provide a little bit more insight and perspective on that particular item, and then if there's any comments with respect to public safety, law enforcement's here to give some additional insight. But one of the things that I'd like for the board to keep in the back of their mind is that we're anticipating that you probably would see construction activity occur on that roadway where the Bronze Ladies existing facility is, because that is effectively where the construction of the hotel would happen. So in the event that we decided to allow for the reopening of the farmer's market and with the understanding that if somebody wants to effectively spearhead that initiative, you do have some major construction that's going to occur on that roadway and may provide for some additional challenges as far as pedestrian safety, vehicular safety, roadway signage, et cetera. But I will allow for the Parks, or the Recreation Director to provide a little bit more insight concerning the event and the activities that occur associated with the market. Okay, well, historically, we have closed that road off for the market per conversations with DOT, the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, businesses, basically the flow of traffic. It really hasn't been conducive to safety, especially in the peak times of the season, which is when they typically run it. It was, we always received mixed reviews from businesses, good and bad. We've had a group approach us about reopening the road, or reopening the opportunity to close the road. We've actually, per our discussions, we're setting up meetings to look for alternative locations for this possibility, especially with the construction in the near future, whether it's at Brown Boxer, whether it's on our property, it's our, the City Hall parking lot, the Windexe lot. Basically, their biggest concern is the proximity to their businesses because they do believe that it has brought a lot of business to their storefronts, which obviously is important. But the public safety and the backup of traffic, basically either to the bridge, if not over the bridge on certain days, and I know that that one block party was one, you know, these are separate cases. There was the Wednesday market, and then there was the block party and other evening events that we've closed the road for. So those are separate occasions, you know, they're kind of pining for the road closure for that market again, but, you know, we do have the concerns of traffic and with the construction and everything. So we are kind of left at a point now where we are going to seek alternative locations and at least have the discussion for them if they want to do something, like I said, if we want to open up the City Hall lot to bring people to the city center area, or a potential conversation with Windexe or Boxer with their parking lots and something that they can do to get people at least near these businesses for those purposes, so.
Well, I can start off. I can start off if you'd like, because I certainly did read with empathy the individual from Colette's Fashions and her desire to bring back the market. I personally worked the market last, for the last two or three years, however long it's been there, from January through April as a volunteer in the market, and it was great fun. I mean, and it did bring a lot of people, and especially February and March, there was a tremendous amount of people. And I think it was great that it did encourage or bring more business into her area, but at the same time, I guess, the situation has really changed itself for this year because the first, the only thing I could really think of is, well, they can't have it there because there would be so much confusion. Well, it wouldn't even be confusion, you couldn't even get through the traffic at all. I mean, it would just, it's not workable with construction even being at a very minimum. It's not, it's just not a workable situation. And it is sad, because I think that the real desire is certainly not to have the market in the city, you know, in Brown Boxer or any other area, because it's not right in front of their business. But I just don't think it's workable, and I do have sorrowful feelings about it too, but that sometimes that's just the way of progress, isn't it? It's progress. Thank you.
I agree. I think, you know, with the coming of the new construction, it's going to be difficult, but we do need to look at ways that we can help the merchants that are there and help them. And just a note to the people out there in TV land, the Browns Boxer, Brown Boxer, no, the Bronze Lady is currently in the process of remodeling the old CVS by Windexe, and they are having a moving sale, so go buy. Any more discussion on this item?
I think we talked about it one time before, but how soon was the construction going to start?
I think we probably will see some activity within the next 30 to 45 days. I know that they're already starting to look at making some improvements on the seawall and those types of things, and those may occur sooner than that, but I would say 30 to 45 days, very confidently, that they'll be moving. You'll start seeing some construction activity.
It would probably even take us longer to even try and contact the farmer's market to come back to the area during this time.
And there's some things that I think we can look to do to help create a little bit of synergy and some activity to support those businesses, especially when there's construction in that area. So from the staff standpoint, we're probably going to convene a meeting with those downtown businesses and see, okay, we know that there's construction that's happening on this roadway, what can we do to help promote and encourage folks to know that you're still open and you're open for business, for sure.
I know, I attended the Christmas in July activity they have there, and despite everyone I spoke to, they said they just love that farmer's market, they really enjoyed it, and it brought in some good business for them that one day a week. And I'd like to see what we could do to help them out at this time, and I just don't know where to put everybody, you know?
That's the thing, isn't it?
And there was one vendor who had great bread, remember that?
Did you have it suggested? I'm sorry.
Well, there's normally not public comment, but go ahead. Not on this kind of item.
Be here.
Then we got to let you talk.
Thank you.
And you can pass that to the, and then that, that's a promotion for Madeira Way. Oh, and a survey on how many we do want here. There you go. Okay.
Is it on? Okay. All right, so.
So I, you know, wrote a letter last week.
Did you name an address?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Nicolette's Houghton, 10536, 65th Avenue, Seminole, Florida. I have a shop on Madeira Beach. It's called Colette's Fashions. I wrote a letter last week, and thank you very much for reading it, Clara. It was long. And it did state, I've been there six years. Only three stores are original to the last six years that I've been there. There are 20 storefronts. Nineteen stores have gone in and out of 20 stores. Nineteen. That's 95 percent. Because Madeira Way is kind of deadish, to be honest with you. I've been there 40 years. Very lucky. The Farmer's Market literally increased my sales on Wednesday by 40 percent. And I already told you I expanded. Now I unexpanded. Awesome. Love to unexpand a business. Madeira Beach is not responsible for me making sure my business runs well. I get that. But there's not much going on. The CVS, they made it backwards. So now, I was all happy we're getting a CVS. It's backwards. No door towards Madeira Way. Another awesome, awesome idea. So, yeah, and I've watched every single meeting for two years now, and Madeira Way kind of doesn't get talked about a lot. And then the market, now, we lost it. And this is not actually how far into this I wanted to go. But we... I tried to set up an association, set up an association, people left. Had to reset up an association. Well, we got one together. We're actually meeting tomorrow at 4:00 at Painted Cottage to set up a Halloween. We're going to try again. We're going to try to set up a Halloween event. And I... And the traffic, I get it. It's because of the construction. I totally understand that. But to the wording, sorry, Mr. Evans, was, "We will never close Madeira Beach down again." You know, once we rebuild, maybe there is something we can do, or maybe when construction stops, we can have the Thanksgiving event. We make a killing on the Thanksgiving event. That is the best. You know, there still might be time for that one, the craft fair, and then the May event. Those are not in season because closing Madeira Way down in season on a Saturday and a Sunday is the stupidest thing you can do. There was three weeks of bad weather, and then all of a sudden, we had really good weather. So it wasn't just about going to that ridiculous event where you pay $25, which hurt my business so badly. And if an event ever were to go on Madeira Way, take a survey, ask everybody, "Do you want a motorcycle gang thing happening?" And if out of the 14, eight say yes and six say no, it happens. The other six, oh, well, next one, I'll vote for, and I'll get my way. And we never get asked. We never got asked about that one. So, you know, I'm do hoping... I am hoping that Madeira Beach events, little Christmas festivals, all that Hallmark stuff will happen.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, if it's okay with the merchants, I would like to attend that meeting tomorrow and then report back to the Board some of the comments and perspectives that the business communities have and maybe schedule something for a workshop discussion or a staff report later on on a regular meeting to just update the Board of the nature of the conversation and, you know, have an idea-sharing opportunity.
You know, you were saying, "What can we do?" And that's where our PR guy comes in.
Right.
You know, he's the one that's going to have to push Madeira Way and push wherever we move the Farmer's Market to, be Windexee Lot or wherever it is. You know, that's his job to get that word out there.
Any more discussion about that? Okay. Next, we have July fiscal year 2018. I'm sorry.
Reese?
Yes, Reese.
Do we have no comments?
Well, go ahead. I know you did. Public comment is still open.
Reese will have to sit in the front for me now once it doesn't take you so long to come.
It's time to read again.
Reese Noran, 363 Medallion Boulevard, still your closest neighbor. I just wanted to do a little politicking as far as the Farmer's Market or any other event on Madeira Way because it is popular and it does help the businesses. You may not be aware of it, but the taxi drivers and the Uber drivers were told because we're having the new projects that there really wasn't any point in stopping in Madeira Beach to shop, which certainly I would hate, like, you don't want to be a merchant with that sort of word going on. So, yeah, John, your idea of using the public relations person to advertise on behalf of our merchants and businesses in general is a good idea because things are just not communicated well, which I've said up here every time I get up, I guess. But we do need better communications. We do need prosperity if we're going to pay for the things that have been done, like this building, the firehouse, and the rest of the projects that have been, in my mind, an improvement by past administrations, even though those administrations have been criticized as not providing enough voice to the public in general. I do think they were improvements. At least, I can't think of any of them that I'd like to see go away, starting with the Rock Park or this building or the Firehouse or the Athletic Complex. So I think publishing, pushing Shop Madeira, support the businesses that are here, and try to encourage new ones to come in is a way to have prosperity, to pay the bills for the things that we've undertaken. Thank you.
Robert Preston, 425 South Bay Shore. Again, promoting the city. I look at these electronic boards that change advertisements and stuff. We need to have those coming into the city. The Madeira Beach logo is an awesome logo. So if there's nothing going on, that can be up there and say, "Welcome." But if there's a Farmer's Market or there's the Madeira Beach, whatever, volleyball, softball, any of that stuff could be posted up there when it's coming in. When you see those signs, even they're the sheriff's signs, right? People are reading those things, right? So if we had one at each entrance into our city, that's three of them, that size, that had Madeira Beach on it and what's going on, that would really help everybody within the city. I think it would be just an awesome, awesome thing to have. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Public comment is now closed. Thank you. Next item is the July fiscal year 2018 financial report and quarterly investment report.
And Madam Mayor and Commissioners, I'll be brief on this report. Per the city's investment policy, an investment report is required to be presented to the Board of Commissioners on a quarterly basis, and attached for your review is the quarterly investment report. And just to highlight this in summary, the total... City's current total holdings are approximately $18,880,738, which is real close to the previous quarter. One significant thing, we have a little over $5.6 million within Florida Community Bank. They are going to merge with Snovis Bank in January, and we had a meeting with them, I believe, last week. And it basically is not going to be too much of a change, but it is going to be a bigger bank. And they have promised us a... To try to do better with our rate of return that we're getting on our money. So the 0.92 percent yield, we do anticipate that to increase. And the other significant thing, while this report doesn't show any CDs, we did open up in July, which would be reflected on the next quarterly report, three CDs and Seaside Bank. Seaside Bank is actually the bank that refinanced our Series 2014 note. And so what strategically, we set up three CDs to coincide with the payment of that note over the next three years, thinking we would get interest that would help us make that payment. And that's all I've got on the report.
Well, why did we go down $87,000 from the previous quarter?
Actually, it's, like I said, it's just a slight decrease. There's nothing significant. In fact, shared with the City Manager that because we don't have the major projects going on that we had this time last year. Last year, we had the undergrounding in Phase 1 still being completed. We had more stormwater-type projects going on. This year, we do have Rex Place, but we really don't have the significant outflows that we had this time last year. So the $87,000 is just very, very slight. It's not significant at all as compared to last year.
I don't know. I think I just got confused. Why is it going... Why did it go down?
It's probably going down because of increased operations for that particular quarter. And again, I don't see it as anything significant. We had a huger swing, a much larger swing last year this time.
Next, we have reports and correspondence. First off, we have the City Commission. And I do have an email I would like to read into the record. It's from a student who lives in Madeira Beach. His name is Jared Hampton. He says, "In a nation so divided, it is imperative that we keep the community close and keep our streets safe for every human that steps onto our wonderful town of Madeira Beach. The youth in Pinellas County have mobilized together and created a nonprofit organization called We the Students to make a difference and to work together to find and create common solutions among all types of people despite political beliefs. March for Our Lives and We the Students, along with many other chapters around the country, are working towards getting past present and future generations excited for a voting process, excited to elect someone who shares our common beliefs, and overly civically engaged to engage morally just leaders. Because as students and young people of this country, we believe our voices should matter and be heard." And then he goes on to say, "People interact and trust their state and local officials the most. That's why I'm calling on you to join Mayors for Our Lives, a coalition of mayors created for March for Our Lives. As a part of this coalition, you pledge to dedicate resources to supporting a day of voter registration in every high school and college in your city on National Registration Day, which is September 25." Obviously, we don't have any colleges or high schools, but we would like to see all the young people in our city go out and register to vote on September 25.
And the old people.
And the old people.
And I have an announcement.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to remind the listeners out there and the listeners at home that there's a neighborhood meeting in Johns Pass Village at 6:00 on Thursday evening, September 6. And it's going to be at the Rusty Anchor Restaurant, which is adjacent to the Bell Tower in Johns Pass Village. And there will be a presentation for the Johns Pass Village Resort done by the architect, I believe, and other members of the project. And I just wanted to make sure with the city attorney, would that pose any problem if there's more than one commissioner? Does that cause a problem with the sunshine?
If it's a matter that's going to come before you as something that you're going to vote on, I would advise that you probably not attend. But if you do attend, then please don't speak with each other whatsoever about the item.
That's fine.
I'm not from that...
Okay. I just don't know the public perception of it, okay? And I just think that as many people want to hear it or, you know, just listen, there'll be questions and answers, but we don't have to ask any questions. I just want to, you know, certainly be there, but I don't want to be out of respect for anybody else in my point of view.
Correct, yes. If you want to go there to listen, that's fine.
And go right back home. That's fine. I live right on the street. Okay, so that's just...
But if she's talking about something that might come before us and she's giving her opinion...
No, I won't give my opinion.
Okay.
I mean, that's the whole thing. That's why I would not speak at the meeting, is what I'm saying. I wouldn't ask a question. I wouldn't want any, you know, any impropriety.
If this is...
But I'm a citizen, you know, and I live on that street.
You're also elected official, so you have to be careful.
Exactly.
If it's an item that's going to come before you as a quasi-judicial matter, then you obviously have to disclose any ex parte communication before you have that hearing. But I would advise you, even if for the appearance of possible sunshine violation, just, you know, just listen. Don't interact.
Right.
Don't interact. Don't speak. If people ask you to speak, people ask you your opinion, just listen.
I put tape on my mouth.
You don't have to do that.
Go with my lawyer.
That's not...
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other reports?
Yeah, I have a report. I just had a couple of questions. When is the survey in Johns Pass supposed to be completed?
I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Carrier today. He was in and out. But I know, obviously, they're out there. I can send the Board an email, kind of updating on the status as to when that survey will be complete.
And one other thing, where are we with the next phase of undergrounding?
That is a conversation that the Finance Director and I had, and we're going to touch base with Steve Tard and give him an update. So we can provide you with an update on that as well.
Because it just kind of came up, and I just thought... It's like we've been doing it, doing it, and now all of a sudden, I haven't really seen anything happening on the boulevard.
It's in the works.
Good. Public works. That's all I have.
Anyone else on the Commission? Have any reports, correspondence? City Attorney?
If I'm lucky enough to be invited back, I promise not to talk so much.
We'll hold you tonight.
City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the Board, a couple of things. Certainly, we want to make sure that those that are interested and are available to attend our 9/11 Memorial, join us at approximately 8:45 on Tuesday, September 11, at the 9/11 Memorial. We will start at 9:45 sharp. Anyone that is looking to be at the event, certainly, we encourage you to get there early. We do have a full agenda of speakers, and it's a great opportunity for us to come together as a community and recognize those first responders, those that we lost, and to celebrate the lives that, you know, we continue to commemorate and celebrate and just really just come together as a community and never forget those that day because I think that's one day that we all know where we were and what we were doing when that occurred. So if anyone is interested in attending, certainly 8:45 at the Memorial on September 11. We will start promptly at that time. And working with our 9/11 Committee, there's T-shirts that are available for sale, and they will disclose that information as to when those items are available. So I did want to communicate that. And then thank you to the Board for the support on the budget and us moving forward with that. That is a big step, and, you know, it's not done until second reading, so we don't want to spike the football before we get into the end zone. But we certainly are excited to be able to put together a document that we think accomplishes what the collective visions of the Board are. So again, thank you for your support and look forward to seeing... So again, thank you for your support and look forward to seeing everyone at the 9/11 Memorial on Tuesday.
Thank you. With that, the Board of Commissioners' meeting is adjourned at 8:39.